Reminds me of my old school teaching days. Good morning, children. Thank you all for being here, and I'm sure all of us have other things that you'd like to be doing today. So let me briefly tell you that this is a very important, serious subject, and that's the reason you're here, and we recognize that, we the town. And we thank you again for being here. This morning, the way this works is a public hearing. It is not a debate. It's a public hearing, and it's going to be a little different than an opportunity for you to speak at our town meetings where you put your name in, requesting time, a time sheet. Clerk gives it to me, and then I go down the list and recognize each person that come to the podium and give their name, and they have three minutes to talk. That's the way it works at a town meeting normally. This is a special public hearing on a special Saturday so that we can accommodate and hear more people express their opinions. So today, we don't have a sign up list because we continue to have people walking in, walking in, and I'm sure we'll have more people walk in. So the way this is going to take place this morning, the procedure is going to be, everybody's going to have an opportunity to speak. Three minutes, because if you get to go on and on and on, we didn't bring, I didn't bring anything to eat. I don't know if anybody else did or not, but three minutes per person, the clerk will ring a little bell and tell me the time's up, and please honor and respect all of us with that three-minute time limit. So with that, the commissioners will make the final decision on this big subject, just like all the others. And to begin our public hearing, first thing I'm going to do is recognize our interim town manager, and she's going to give some general information so that we all can be on the same page as best we can. There's a lot of misinformation, pluses and minuses and so forth, and one of the things that we hope to accomplish today is to filter out some of this misinformation that's out there and respect and restate the facts as best we can so that all of us can best understand this critically important subject. And with that, Kristy Ferguson, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you all for being here today. On the computer screens that you see around the room are Scott Leo, our bond attorney for this issue, and Andrew Carter, our financial advisor, in case there's any information that they need to add for today's agenda. The LGC has asked, and we have been saying it every town meeting up until this point where this subject was covered on the Geo Bond referendum, that we make sure the public understands that the pier is uninsurable, any new pier for construction would be uninsurable for wind and water-driven events. If the pier were destroyed in the future after being built, then we would still be responsible for the debt. So that statement has been made at this hearing as well. What's been presented in your packets for the last few meetings that you've seen town-wise and today is the worst-case scenario language that we had to present with our application to the LGC for what's been given to us by our engineering firm HGR for construction and interest on that construction. It also uses the most expensive method of construction because the engineer is saying that we cannot tell the contractor at the time if the pier were to go forward, what method of construction to use. So keep that in mind. It's the worst-case scenario with contingency built in, and it uses the most expensive method of discussion. What it also, those numbers don't take into account is that after any of these hearings, any commissioners that are here could meet in additional meetings, have workshops with the financial advisor, and work through other funding strategies with current town funds and those that may become available as debt service falls off in future years for other strategies to fund this that doesn't include this particular amount of tax increase. So the language that you're voting on and that you're seeing, again, is a worst-case scenario if there was an issuance, but there are other avenues that your commissioners would work hard to look at in the future as far as other funding strategies. And just because the language, let's just say if the language passed, it doesn't mean that this board or any future board up to seven years has to issue the bonds. So those are just some of the facts that we'll cover that's kind of been said previously and to this point, and now that language is out, and then I turn it back over to Mayor Holden.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we need some more chairs in the room? Pretty much. Okay. It's like a church. We still have a few seats up front, so anybody that comes in, anybody that comes in in the back, send them forward, and that's the price you pay for being late. Okay. All right. My first request is, raise your hand if you want to be recognized. Yes, sir. You're the first one back. You need to come to the podium and give us your name, your address, where you live, and speak for three minutes or less.
So my name is Bob Brown, and my wife Julie and I, we live at 113 Ocean Boulevard. We've owned our home on for just over eight years now, and we spend about four to six months here every year, and pretty much the entirety of COVID. We love our community. When the initial meetings regarding the pier acquisition occurred, I followed the proceedings closely, and I attended some of the meetings where my schedule aligned and allowed me to. As some of you know, I'm a pretty prolific letter writer as well. I had a variety of questions I asked, both in writing as well as in person. Questions like wherein lied the need to acquire the pier property? What kind of due diligence was done prior to completing the acquisition? What was the plan for the usage of the property and, of course, the cost? One of the meetings, one of the commissioners, the then commissioners, touted what a great deal the town was getting on the property while most of the other commissioners nodded their heads in agreement. My question, both verbally and in writing over time, has been, what was the next best offer? I never got an answer. I still wonder, what was the next best offer? Was there a next? And it was said repeatedly that there wouldn't be any increase in taxes for the property owners as a means to cover any acquisition costs. Now, that's kind of wordly, because this is not acquisition cost. It's additional. So I'm going back to my question. Why that position was so important? My observation is that usage over our eight years here has never been too significant, but that the nostalgia factor significantly drove the decision. In my opinion, that doesn't constitute something, particularly when the majority of property owners, when queried by the Property Owners Association, indicated that they were not in favor of purchasing. The voters might have been, but that does not constitute the property. So due diligence, clearly, there is not enough. So here we are, owners of something that is in a state of significant disrepair, which requires an even more significant investment of property owners, not just voters' dollars, to make what I consider to be slightly flavored water out of lemon. And what is the endgame? The cost. There's still a lot of unanswered questions while now requiring much more money. So some new questions. If we got such a good yield, then we should probably be able to sell it, break even. Has this been considered? And if so, what's the objection? I ask again, what is the need? Other than a new pier, what's the plan? And more importantly, why? Certainly, it doesn't impact rentals. We had an unusable pier for years, and it hasn't precluded renters coming to Holden Beach. There are up years and down years in rentals, but they're more aligned with the economy than they are with the Holden Beach having a pier. And my last question, why are we throwing the taxpayers' good money after the town does? Okay, well, I guess that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
No, ma'am.
Good morning. I'm Jane Bremer. My home is located at 112 Dalton. My primary home is in Roxboro, North Carolina. I married into a family that has been here since the early 1970s. I built that home. My husband and I married from my in-laws. I can say, I have been on the pier once. One time, 1985. Been there six. I agree with everything the gentleman said. My point is, I'm a property owner. I have a conversation without representation. I want to go throw people off. I was at the last property owners' meeting, and they discussed doing a survey of the property owners. And my feeling is, we did that last time, and the commissioners disregarded it, the then commissioners, about the purchasing limit. So what is going to change this time about throwing good money after bad? I have looked at changing and making this my primary residence so I can vote. I have a true conflict because I have something at home I want to vote for, too, and you can only vote one place.
That's right.
I want you, my elected officials that I didn't get to vote for, to do the right thing. The pier needs to go.
Right rear. I can't see who you are. You got your hand up. Oh, I know Jim, yeah.
We have exchanged nods and glances, ma'am. Could I start?
You have the floor, sir. Three minutes.
Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. My title is disappear. About four years ago, a mostly different board did a reckless, ill-conceived, and most undemocratic thing by purchasing the pier against the majority of the town's wishes. We have been saddled with this collection of sticks, which has created nothing but angst, bad feelings, and obviously inebriated social media rants that has taken up too much of the town's time and treasure. Now, we wish to start this entire process and the possible conclusion in the future. As I say, history doesn't repeat itself, but it does rhyme. The same wooden pier at the same location, subjected to the ever-increasing water levels and storms that we, and we are told that we shouldn't expect the same result. We are told that we are not doomed to repeat the same. That's nonsense. Let's speak of facts. Fact one, no one really misses the pier. It has been closed for years, and not one person has said, quote, "I'm not renting or I'm selling my house because the pier is closed." How do I know this? Because if there were one, and only one text, one email, one letter indicating this, it would have been plastered over any one of the shrill social media sites and would have made the news. Right? Inebriated, inebriated text. So no one really misses the pier. Fact two, we are setting up our future selves, our offspring, should they inherit, and the Holden Beach community for more of the same in the not-so-distant future. Do you think another major storm isn't on the way? Of course there is. Do you really think the pier is going to fare any better than the last one? Of course not. Will there be more arguing, fighting, and bruhahas about the pier? Of course there will be. For what? Fact three, we are never, ever going to get any sort of return on the investment of this multimillion-dollar sum, and let's be honest with each other. No one knows what this thing is actually going to cost to build, insure, repair, and maintain this pile of sticks once it is built. This is much like the purchase of a boat, throwing money into a hole in the water. Fact four, we, the town homeowners, are the only ones who are going to be paying for this. No one off-island, no one who visits once a week every year, no one who visited Holden Beach a decade ago and has warm memories should have a voice in this decision-making process. I applaud the board. I really do. I really do. I applaud the board that this is going to be a referendum for the town and only the town to decide. Fact five, the last I heard, the cost to demolish the existing pier is approximately $400,000. The last time I checked, this is substantially less than the proposed $7,300,000 sum. If this bond issue is ratified and we go through with it, this is the amount for not just the bond that we will have to pay for, plus a myriad of other costs. If the pier is demolished, we can take care of the cost in-house and not be saddled with this ridiculous sum. So when the referendum is written and is submitted to the tax-paying residents and property owners of Holden Beach, it only makes sense to offer a box that they can check that supports a demolition of the pier with no town financed construction in the future. Darn it.
Who's next?
Hello, I'm Peter Freer, 198 runs through Avenue West, and I'm sure I'm probably going to say what Mr. Brown didn't have time to say, but looking back, but looking forward. Question is, the $7.3 million is kind of an unusual number because when you finance it, it really comes out to 11.5. The other question is, what's the, does it include the money you've already sunk in to buy the, to buy the existing pier that we're going to do away with? The other question is, the operating costs, lights, water, employees, there's a lot of other costs associated with this $7.3 million.
I need to say a hand. Yes, sir.
Morning. I'm Roger Betcher. My wife and I live at 122 Durham Street. We've been owners for 10 years. We've been residents for 10, for eight of those 10. And I have done some calculations based on the $7.3 million, and I had a property valuation on a $500,000 home that amounts to about 40 cents a day on the $300 and some dollars a year on a $100,000 valuation. There were about 50 pier along the North Carolina coast in about the last, I think it was 30 years. There are now 17. It's a dying breed. Yes, there is nostalgic value, but we all hold on to nostalgic things in our lives for things that my wife still hasn't been able to explain why I hold on to them. So yes, it might not be a money generator, but there's not much on Holden Beach that can entice people to come other than the ocean. Our businesses on the island are limited. They do a fantastic job. They're busy throughout the entire summer months and a few into the fall months, but after that, it drops off. And the more that we can entice people to come here and maybe tap into that revenue as they come in, I mean, everybody sees a QR code everywhere anymore. I'm sure there could be donations made by residents and guests to our island that are excited about having a pier to walk out on. I think it's, it's an enjoyable event. And quite honestly, how many of us in North Carolina have been to all the beautiful sights in this state, but we love living here? We don't always get to go to all those beautiful sights. We could also have that opportunity to go out onto a pier more frequently and enjoy the view back onto the island and looking back at our wonderful little town. Thank you.
Let's not fight over who's next. Yes, sir.
My name is Rick Roberts. I live at 329 Serenity Lane. I've been a property owner since 2015. I've been a resident and a voter since 2021. Currently a member of the Board of Adjustment at the Town of Holden Beach. I'm currently on the Board of Directors of the Doones Gate Property Owners Association. All my time, I've never heard anybody say, "I wish we had a pier." I have heard a lot of people say, "I wish we had a nice restaurant on the beach strand." I think that's the way we got to go.
Still looking for a hand. My goodness. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Stephanie Ward. My husband, Robert, and I are property owners here. We have 107 by the sea, down toward the West End since 2021, 2021. We are property owners. We are not able to vote. I guess the one thing, if I might ask the audience a question, are those in attendance a question? Would you stand if you're in favor of this referendum? Would you stand if you're in favor of paying taxes to rebuild the pier? Thank you. Thank you. I think there's some information for the board, how these people feel. Also, I wonder, and I'm not opposed necessarily to an increase in taxes, but if we increase taxes, is this the highest and best use? I would love to see better services here on the island, like fire, emergency, a new fire station, which I understand is being discussed, but I think those would be better use of our tax dollars.
Okay. Yes.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Terry Huffsteller. I have a house at 163 OPW, and I have my permanent home down in the West End. What the woman just said kind of just went to me. We're having a talk about something very, very important, to me anyway, is about a fire department. So obviously, the pier is a big deal, but what's bigger? Having a fire department. Has there ever been any talk about putting the fire department in the parking lot of the pier? We own it. And do something else with the parking? I don't know what the solution is. But I've been coming to this island since 1979. I've been on that pier. It is lovely. But what was even better is in the front of that pier, we had breakfast on styrofoam plates. It was the best breakfast ever. You remember those? We had games. We had, we had tackle. We had things. What if we considered putting something like that back that would benefit everybody and be an income generator? I think the pier is done. I don't want to pay my taxes for something that's uninsurable. If I went to my insurance agent and said, "I'm going to buy a $7 million house, but I'm not going to insure it," you think I'm going to get that loan? That would be ludicrous. That would be ludicrous. And I feel that this is true. We live at the Atlantic Ocean, that brings with us what is out there stirring today. Thankfully, I think it's going to go past us, but hurricane, it's not if, it's when. And if you tell me that I have to continue to pay taxes after that hurricane destroys, I've been here long enough to see it eat the far out and keeps coming back. So I don't want to continue to pay taxes. I will support something that supports everybody. And as a, as a voter, I have that right. But as you people that have contributed to this island's growth, but don't live here, it's not fair that they do not get a vote in this. But thank you for letting me speak.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to thank y'all for letting me speak. I'm Tim Millwood, and I own property at 1052 Tide Ridge, and I hope to move here in about three years. We haven't built a house yet, so this is the only chance I have to tell you that I do not want the pier. I do not want to be paying taxes, extra taxes for 20 years for something that can be washed out to sea immediately. And just like the lady here, I feel like that we're, we're being taxed without being represented by not being able to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi there, Ken Moore, 106 Charlotte Street, we've got property for 41 years now. $31.60 doesn't sound too bad, 40 cents a night doesn't sound too bad financially, but you guys that remember net present value from back in college business school, maybe? That, I bought a canal house, $1 million. That's 316,000 a year, the net present value at 6% would be the same as each of us writing a check for $3,624. That's, that's the value that's straight, that's what you're getting to with a $3 million referendum. $3,600, they dollars for every million dollars. If you've got an oceanfront house, you're talking the $700,000 chip. Math is pretty easy from there. But the $7.3 million is just the first increment, that's just the first stoppage. Because we tore down the building, now we've got to build a commercial hurricane building on the stream. Another $3 million. When the hurricane is, Chris mentioned, when it gets potentially knocked down by hurricane, that's another 3.5 billion dollars. We're not talking about a $7.3 million purchase, we're talking about the 3 million purchased, the 7.3 to build a pier, another 3 million for a building, another 3 now for continuously repairing the pier. Now you're talking $16 million. That's more like, that's more than all that costs, and certainly speaking. So now you're talking about not writing a check of your canal owner, but $3,600, you're talking about $75,000 that you're costing the pier. With your oceanfront, $2 million house, $16,000, that's the cost. That's just objective numbers, that's just, that's just straight out back, regardless of how sentimental we might be about the pier, or might not be. But I think that's what we all need to think. And I think they're probably, I agree, they're better and higher uses for the money. Thanks.
Appreciate your time this morning. My name is Glenn Tatro, T-A-T-R-O, I live at 337 Brunswick Avenue West. We've been there since 2002, my wife and I here. I'm, I'm not sure I understand, I, I'm as guilty as a lot of people that are residents or voting residents here, that the fact that since 2002, this is my first time I've ever been, and, and the apathy on my part is probably not the right thing to do, but what is is. I don't understand, just listening this morning, I don't understand, we sound like we're all defensive. This is our island, this is not their island. Why are we, why do we have to be so defensive against this whole thing? I don't understand. If people don't want it, if people don't want the pier, then we don't want the pier. Just get rid of it and figure out something else to do with the property. It just seems silly to me that we have to stand up here and fight. Just ludicrous. That's a personal opinion.
I'll say a hand.
Becky Green, 115 Sunshine, I've owned my home since 2001. This gentleman that just spoke, my question is, if the bond referendum gets voted down, can the five commissioners vote to build the pier regardless, like they did with the purchasing of the property? That is my question.
Is there an answer?
Answer.
That's the answer.
The answer.
The answer is yes.
Good morning. My name's Glenn Brown, I'm at 252 Brunswick Avenue West, and we've been
Just a minute. There's no debates, and please honor everybody's time. Thank you. Your name again, sir?
Yes, Glenn Brown, 252 Brunswick Avenue West. Wife Kathy and I purchased a home here in 2019, right before COVID, spent a lot of time down here, spend, still spend a lot of time down here, probably half the year. Our base home is in Richmond, Virginia, and we watch these very meetings online. So we're, we're dedicated to what's happening in the community. I'm here, I've already written a letter to the commissioners, and certainly appreciate your time being in front of me here today. We have, we are very much against the pier, as I know apparently most of everybody here is. We're not against it so much as having a pier, but if we had a pier out there, we'd be fine with it. However, we've been down here 17 years total, and I've been on that pier maybe twice with my grandkids. Maybe thrown a line in by myself once or twice, had breakfast once, all very nice. But I ask everybody here, over the period of the next 20 years, we're going to spend, by my rough calculations, without doing any due, major due diligence, but based on the numbers of 31.6 for 100, and any increase in free, coming up, we're going to be looking at about $5,000 per homeowner on this island. For what? Yeah, more than that, I mean, like I say, this is very lame, but, but main problem I have is, I can't vote. I'm, I'm kind of in limbo. And I don't think we should be doing something for the entire island without having to say so, and whether or not you can vote. My question is, why didn't we just send out a proxy vote to every homeowner? Email, whatever, have a deadline, and see what, you know, after we asked amongst the whole community whether they wanted the profit, wanted this new pier? I mean, seem, that'd be simple to me, but all we got is a small forum here, and I don't know what's going to come of that. But I trust that everybody will make the right decision. We love Holden Beach and look for a great future. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Will Carter, 108 Starfish, I've been here since Alan Holden was serving ice cream company. I just wanted, just wanted to say, 25 years ago, 25 years ago, or 20 years ago, I came in and fought for a park out here, and the same demographic was against the park. So it took us 25 years to get this park out here, now that everybody loves it. Helped start the Lockwood Inlet Association, and so that we can get constituency to get money to open up the inlet for voting and whatnot. They came around with terminal drawings, came around with terminal drawings, we were offered one, we had one, the Property Owner Association was able to swoop in and stop that, and they gave us a four-year referendum so we can't vote all of them out at one time. And they held, they held control of that. This pier, it's sort of, this referendum's sort of like trying to sell the three little pigs alone on the straw house. You know, they might go for a brick house because they know that stands up when the big bad wolf comes and blows. And the same demographic has been against it since I've been a kid, all these improvements. And what I'd like to ask is, we've got one of the best pieces of oceanfront property on the east coast, just because you guys might not want a pier, doesn't mean that someday, maybe like 25 years later, we might be able to build a nice structure on the side. So all I ask of this commissioners board is don't ruin it for other people, for my children, for my grandchildren. Be able to do something that's worthwhile. My president says we're getting ready to get into a golden age right now. We don't know if there's going to be big, big grants to build things like piers, other infrastructure around, but don't screw it up and so that my kids and my grandkids can't, can't utilize that piece of property for what it's intended for. I went out on that pier since I was a small child, loved it. The reason, ain't nobody's been there since 1988 because it's thousand, it's, it's short, and so you can't get past the shallow water to fish, that's why nobody does. But all these little kids you see walking up and down the sidewalk all night, these girls dressed up in their best clothes, they have nowhere to go except the sidewalk. And it's because of the older demographic, and they're the only ones to get to vote here. The Holden Beach property owners put out a survey, it was 969 people answered when they asked about the pier. 40.2 of those people said, "Yes, we'd like to buy it, and we don't give a damn." And 58, what is it, 59.8 said no. And then they did a quickie, a quickie demographic survey, and they only got like 300 people, and that's where they got the 85, 15. The Property Owner Association people are going to keep the board, one of the Property Owner Association members will win in November. You know, that's the same way we got the four-year referendum because the Property Owner Association, but I'd like you to know, 600 people are in the Property Owner Association. It takes 30 for a forum, so it takes 16 of them to tell all the property owners about it.
Anyone else? One more call, anyone else? Oh. Ms. Martin?
Ask all work.
Gina Martin, 1032 Ocean Boulevard West, Holden Beach. I am definitely in the minority. And I'm sure that everyone here that comes to regular meetings knew you're always going to speak. So I'm going to tell you, my family's been here since 1962. There has always been a pier. It used to be longer, now it's shorter, but you know what? It's still standing up, and that's a lot of years. Y'all are talking about insurance, and it's going to wash away, and it's going to do this, and it's going to do that. Well, my bet is, if we have a decent engineering company that's going to construct that pier, and it's going to be wooden, that it's still going to be standing here when the majority of us, and most of us in this audience are fairly old, are gone. But guess what? My grandchildren and my great-grandchildren will still be here. And guess what? They will still remember that I used to work at that fishing pier when I was 13, 14, and 15. That was a long, long time ago. I enjoyed every minute of it, I enjoyed all the people I met, I have enjoyed since all the food I've eaten there over the years. You all talk about the expense. Nobody's going to go. Well, guess what? We're talking about a project that maybe, or maybe not, we've got seven years to decide if we want to use this referendum money. In the meantime, we got a wonderful grant writer over there. Who knows? Maybe she can come up with a grant that will build that pier for us. Who knows what kind of money is out there? Got seven years to decide, but this is going to be just like our jetty. We had the permit. Who's got the jetty now? Ocean Isle. We probably can never get another permit for a jetty, and we can watch, watch our island wash away. So there were people up here at that time that made that decision, there were people that sat in this office, in this audience, that were dead set on not having that jetty. Well, most of them now wish that we had it, and that Ocean Isle didn't, but they got our permit. So there you go. So if we don't take this opportunity, whether you can vote or not vote, and we don't vote for this referendum, whether we ever use a dime of it, we have talked about public-private partnerships, we have talked about all types of different ways, but this board has refused to look at any of those options. They have been brought and brought and brought. So there's many other ways to fund this pier. We do need a pier. I'm a property manager here, and somebody stood up here and said, "Oh, nobody misses the pier." Well, trust me, I hear it all the time, and if you really read all the posts, not just the negative ones, you'll see that many, many other people want to appear here as well. Thank you so much for your
Thank you, Mayor Holton, thank you commissioners for allowing us to speak today and our voices to be heard today. My name is George Pate, my residence is 111 Charlotte Street. I had a former residence at 264 OBW. My family's been here since 1968, some 55 years. So I've seen the pier in its heyday. As a child, I could remember going in there, it was a place for the children to go, young people to do things, people to fish. We had one of the best fishing spots of anywhere on the east coast of the United States. But that's all in the past. I'm a little bit disappointed in the communication of all the facts about the proposed broad referendum from the town and the front sitting board. Ms. Martin just alluded to the seven-year time period. Just because a referendum may be passed, if it's presented and allowed to occur, and if it does pass, there's still seven years before the time, the tide, the town has to say, "Yeah, we're going to issue the bonds." You've got a seven-year period. Now, let me say this, I do not think that the town should operate a pier or a pier building, if you will. Don't think they should operate that. That's not what the town's here to do. But there are opportunities for public-private partnerships, there are grant opportunities. Again, we have a wonderful grant writer right here with us. There are opportunities for other fundraising methods. But here's what I think. The referendum would be a tool in the toolbox for the town. It's non-obligatory, you're not binding, you don't have to issue the bonds and increase taxes to repay the bonds. There are other opportunities you've got seven years to look at. What I think needs to be the guiding force, I've heard several people talk about the economics of it. That should be the guiding force. The current board's had two years to get an economic impact analysis done, and they failed to do that, haven't done it. We don't know what the economic impact is going to be because we're all guessing at what it may be. So do the economic impact analysis, what would it do to the economics of the town? Let that be your guiding thought. Thank you.
Hey. I did a last call, was that my last call? Maybe this one is, anybody else want to speak?
Can I go again?
All right, with that, first thing is, Ms. Ferguson, do you or our guard, not a guard, our bond professional have anything to say? And also, did I answer the question correctly in regards to the town's actions, no matter how the vote got just in the public? I just want to make sure I'm correct.
So because the fact that this board, or any composition of boards between now and the timeline, the bonds could be issued, could change, it really would depend on how that board voted, but if they chose to go at it at a different, different financial mechanism, then yes, they could still build a pier. And as far as having any additional comments, I'd have no additional comments on today's proceedings, just a reminder that it will be another public hearing scheduled for Tuesday evening as part of the Just a reminder that it will be another public hearing scheduled for Tuesday evening as part of the regular board meeting. And then I'll see if either Scott or Andrew have anything they'd like to add.
Nothing to add here.
Nothing for me either.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion from the board to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye. All right. Thank you all for being here.